Good evening.
Good evening.
We would like to call the Richmond Public Schools Board Meeting, Monday, May 7th, to order. Madam Chair.
The board members, so I'd like to respond, Ms. Lohr.
Here.
Mr. Barlow.
Ms. Gibson.
Here.
Ms. Vajana.
Here.
Ms. Taffey.
Here.
Ms. Burke.
Here.
Ms. Owen.
Here.
Dr. Sweeney.
Mrs. Smith.
There.
And like a representative, and one of our students, uh, you think this is Abby Wood?
Yes.
It's the campus.
Abby Wood. Abby Wood, her name is Abby. This is another, uh, Cheryl Gates, gentlemen, and Mark P. Wood. As a senior at Broken High School, she is the president of Broken High School's student representative call. And has led her peers in organizing school activities, and discussing and participating in local and national calls to action. Abby is a outstanding student, and her cabinet of events, she has taken the greatest course in including numerous advanced classroom honors classes. Abby is ranked number two in her class, and has the fourth point for batting two to the A. Woo! She was then home to her senior in school. Though Abby is a disliked and out of the way, but she has included four terms on the policy and environmental standards. And please remind me and drop me, Abby, with two terms.
Thank you very much, for that, and we will send the candidates to the meeting. On the side, just standing in front of the office, we have here is Abby, and I hope this can come to your attention as soon as I get it, and I need to say.
Thank you.
My name is Abby, and I'm a senior at the Richmond High School, and I was a student of the United States. Also, I'm a student of the United States, and I'm a student of the United States. And to add, uh, that, uh, that is, yes. We see that up there, I'm playing from the other side, so I'll try to get it to be, uh, better.
I worked in corrections fifteen years before I came to Richmond as a social worker. Problems are the same. We have asked if we could volunteer as practitioners and trainers at both Armstrong High School and Martin Luther King Middle School. College Public Schools, nothing. We volunteer. We can provide the training that the teachers need, especially with trauma-informed care with African-American children. That seems to be something that people ignore. Children of all colors need to see people that look like them. And they need to see what can happen. Children with trauma, just as our Jewish brothers and sisters remember the Holocaust, black folk remember slavery. And it perpetuates the problem as we move forward. So when our teachers go to schools in the mornings, not only do they have the problems that have been given or transferred to the children from their elders, they also have the problems in our communities with all the drugs, the domestic violence, the total disrespect for society. And when they come to school, before we teach them, we have to deal with those emotional issues. That means you need to be trained to do that. That doesn't come naturally. And you also have to be trained how to train others with those skills. Again, we offer that service to Richmond Public Schools at no charge. And I've taught two principals at Martin Luther King since July. I've called down here since July. And I would like for somebody to take their information and see our children as they are and what they need. At Virginia State, I have the pleasure of teaching many Richmond Public Schools rapport who themselves call themselves miracle children. They're coming out of there with 3.5 and above. So Richmond does produce kids. I'm not one to believe in the F O L when they're telling us that our children are failures. They are not. We need to provide better services in our schools. And finally, you all have school social workers. Now, I can tell you about our teach social work. V C U, Virginia State, Walden University, Marwood University, and apart, I'll be at Virginia Union University. So I know the concepts and methodologies necessary to treat the problems that we have. Educators don't have those skills. So educators can partner with those people who do and give the information, nice colorful information about everything. Please do not put it on your desk. Please read it. Thank you. Please refrain from clapping. I have respect for everyone. If you want to show your appreciation, demonstrate your support by doing this. Again, thank you. Mr. Abraham Moore.
Good evening, School Board Chair, Page, School Board members, and Mr. Camerson, other attendees. Dear Richmond Public Schools teachers, as you reflect back on your elementary, middle of high school time in school, there were one or two teachers who made an indelible impression on your life. Do you remember your teachers? Those educational gurus shaped and formed our learning foundation to be hard to know. I'm thinking back about my favorite music teachers, one of which that has passed on and the other who is currently still educating and guiding students in Richmond Public Schools as a professional school counselors. Teacher Appreciation Day is officially Tuesday, May eighth, two thousand and eighteen. However, we are celebrating all week long. I will be remiss if I did not pause to thank and remember those master teachers of the past and to thank all who are currently walking daily into the learning environment with the goal of motivating, inspiring, and nurturing the minds and hearts of Richmond's jewels, our students. Teaching can be challenging, but the final product of a student mastering is most rewarding. Many teachers love to be remembered as the individuals who helped and create academic awareness. On behalf of the Richmond Education Association, I, we, celebrate you and forever because of your talent, desire to educate our students, your help to mold and shape the future learners to be competitive, law-abiding citizens, and global learners, your ability to create, conduct, and honor those true diverse learning lessons which are stellar. I thank you for being the consistent, positive presence for our students in the Richmond Public School system. Happy Teacher Appreciation Week. President Antoine Ramon Moore. I would also encourage you to attend our walk-in at the different schools tomorrow. If you haven't heard, you can look us up on the Richmond Education Facebook page and say "our school" page. There are just three quick things that we're asking you to do tomorrow. For public education, we are asking you to adorn your clothes in red. That's one. We're asking you, too, to report till one of the middle, elementary, or high schools twenty minutes before they start, and you will receive some directions from either some Richmond Education members or support our school members. And finally, we do thank you all for helping us to motivate our top students in the world. Thank you.
Thank you. If we have other individuals at this time to come forward, please do so at this time. Remember to sign in and state your name.
My name is Tom Hartman. I'm speaking as an individual. I'm going to jump ahead to the issue of renaming T.J. Like most of the older generations, especially the white generations, the idea of renaming T.J. because of Jefferson's slaveholding at first struck me as ridiculous. The man's accomplishments were worth a hundred. Okay, subtract ten for his slaveholding, add back in five for his eloquent words against slavery, and the man still comes out a solid ninety-five. Throw in a couple points for tradition and sentiment, and he comes out at ninety-eight, a solid A-plus. Well worthy of a high school's name in Richmond, Virginia. But wait, who says? Who says the man's accomplishments rate one hundred and his slaveholding only a minus ten? What of someone who holds that his accomplishments do rate one hundred but his slaveholding a minus one hundred? Who's to say what the proper valuation is? Consider Charlie Rose as something of a contemporary parallel. Charlie Rose, great interviewer, give him a one hundred. Yes, okay, it turns out he's despicable with women, minus ten, comes out at ninety, well worthy of keeping his job. Okay, he's flawed. Let those without flaw cast the first stone. We all know this does not fly. The people around Charlie Rose knew for years, forty years, no doubt, they gave him a minus ten, but they sure make sure it did not get in his way. Great interviewer, one hundred minus ten, still comes out at ninety, solid A. We all know this does not fly. A decisive flaw was considered a reasonably minor flaw. If so with Rose, why not so with Jefferson? I myself have come to no conclusion. My vision is T.J.'s students debating this issue before the school board. Not off-the-cuff valuations, but informed, thoughtful, educated valuations. Debate before the school board. Parallel comments for George Webb.
Thank you.
How's everybody doing? My name is Jared Taylor. I'm the new head football coach at Huguenot High School. I wanted to come personally introduce myself to everyone, Superintendent Camerson, the board, Principal Gilstrap, Dr. Ramsey, Ms. Collins, and my wife. Thank you all. I think each one of you have made as opportunity possible. I'm just a man from Louisiana, moving out here to Virginia nine months ago, just trying to make my way, and I was able to take advantage of opportunity, just kind of fell in my lap. So I'm looking forward to taking advantage of that fully, getting our kids in the best possible position to be successful. And I went in a lot of football games at Huguenot High School with your support. I hope I am able to introduce myself to each one of you individually soon. I hope to be able to build a personal relationship soon, and I have your support. So thank you again, and I wish you well.
Good evening, School Board members, School Board Chair, Superintendent. My name is Elizabeth Waite, Special Education and Science teacher at Armstrong. I believe I've spoke to you several times before. First of all, update on the rats. Since March, when I last spoke, we have not seen, I have not seen any more rats in my classroom, so good news. So thank you. What I would like to talk about today, though, is completely different. It has to do with the new I E P online system and the handling of special education paperwork and other things throughout the district. As you may or may not know, we recently, the school district recently rolled out a new system for I E P online, which is a system us special education case managers have to use to write our children's I E Ps. However, it was incredibly poorly handled. First of all, I don't understand why the decision was made to roll out a completely new revamped system mid-year. Especially, the system was to be fully implemented by April, it's inherent from spring breaks, so around April tenth, but all the I E Ps for the year were not due until April thirtieth. And you know, between running down kids, parents for signatures, and just finding more time in our day, people are going to be going to the last minute to get those in. Second, once it was rolled out, our compliance coordinator and assistant principal could not get full access for at least three more weeks after the official rollout date. Third of all, there is only one person, to my knowledge, I've been told that there's only one person who is able to handle tech issues with the system. It does not have anything to do with I E P online. It is up to one woman in the district for all the schools. Finally, the whole system itself is completely unintuitive and more difficult to use than the previous system. Some would say, well, we had to add more safeguards to ensure that our paperwork is compliant. However, this is only going to, this may result, especially rolling it out mid-year when people are still trying to write I E Ps, it is likely to result in more incorrect I E Ps. So I don't know what the process is for approving this rollout. Thirty seconds. I don't have anyone to blame. I just hope that in the future, R P S takes into consideration what effect this is going to have on the teachers who have to learn to use these new systems and make sure that they have teacher input before they do this, because I think any teacher would have looked at that system and said, I, this isn't going to work. Thank you.
Good evening, thanks everyone tonight. My name is Shelley Batiste, I teach J P English at Armstrong, and I'm sure some of you remember me. This is going to be very short. At the last school board meeting, it was mentioned that money allocated for the upgrading of the locks on the doors that were needed, the money was almost gone. Today, we had a lockdown drill at our school, and we would like to know when we will be seeing any new locks, because we have not seen any yet, and my lock apparently broke today. So yay me. The next thing I want to comment is, at the last school board meeting, you also commented that health insurance usage rates are higher for school employees than city employees. For those of you who are in corporate, you're familiar with productivity and measuring productivity. If you were to measure productivity of our school employees, I'm sure that many of our teachers would probably be operating at one hundred and twenty-five to one hundred and fifty percent of productivity. Do you know what that means? You need to reduce the workload, or you're going to lose teachers, one way or the other. In the corporate world, you either hire more staff or reduce the workload. You don't have a choice, you're going to lose teachers. Given that nothing's been done yet to alleviate the stress of the school employees, it's not surprising that the result is a higher use of healthcare resources due to the elevated stress levels, which we know manifests in our body in many ways. So please keep that in mind when you're looking at healthcare. Okay? The last thing I want to do is, I am the coordinator at Armstrong for the walk-in tomorrow. I invite everyone, seven fifteen, that's when we're going to gather, because we report at seven thirty. We invite everyone to participate. If you can't get to Armstrong, I'm sure some schools have a later opening. If you're not able to get to one of the schools, please show your support by wearing red. We do want our schools funded. That's why we're doing this, and we appreciate your support. Thank you, Mr. Camerson. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. If we do not have any others at this time, like the come before, this concludes the public information. Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening. I hadn't planned on speaking tonight, so here it is. Thank you so much.
Excuse me, ma'am, please state your name.
Susan Hawes.
Thank you.
Thank you for turning the U around so that we can see your faces and hear your voices. We really appreciate that. However, if you're going to sit like this anyway, it'd be really helpful to us in the audience if you just sit in your normal places, so there's more room for us. Thank you so much.
The next item on the agenda is item four, Board Business, four point zero one, discuss plans for our lobbyists for the two thousand and nineteen General Assembly.
So Board members, based on our discussion at our last meeting regarding our lobbyist contract, so the question was put before us, how do we want to structure the process going forward, looking at other options such as in-house lobbyists or submitting an RFP to our source, an lobbyist? And Ms. Lilly, at this time, will talk about the process if we want to bid out. So she will go over the process as far as the timeline. How does that look?
Good evening, Board members and audience. Regarding the request for proposals process, you may recall, we went through this before, and I believe you all did, and I know we were doing a couple of things at the same time for an RFP at that particular time, but you know that it starts with the scope of services that the procurement office helps you develop, and it's developed based on the nature of the services that you would like your lobbyists to provide for you with respect to reporting, with respect to whatever activity you wish or you expect for a vendor to provide. Once the scope of services is finalized, that is put into the request for proposals document, which also contains terms and conditions, boilerplate language regarding the contract period, the evaluation criteria, which could be a number of things. It's a percentage schedule, excuse me, a percentage criteria, point allocation, and an evaluation team will be comprised and will review any proposals that are provided in response to the RFP. If I recall correctly, it will take a couple of weeks for that to be out on the street, and then, once the proposals come in, the evaluation team will look at the proposals, review them, score them, and if necessary, call any of the vendors in for interviews, if, as I said, if necessary. And then, a recommendation is made based on that scoring system to the board as to who or which company will be awarded the contract for those services.
So Ms. Lilly, so who are to bid out the time line again?
If I'm not mistaken, it starts, of course, once you have finalized your scope of services and your RFP, but we're looking at a couple of weeks for that actually being out on the street, meaning posted in the newspapers, so that vendors, potential vendors can respond to the request for proposals.
So again, so again, some of the options are in-house on a part-time basis, or again, to bid out for new services. So what is the pleasure of the board? Ms. Young.
Thank you, ma'am, Chair. Could we be reminded what our expenditure in this twenty-seven, twenty-eighteen year
The expenditure, the monthly expenditure is four thousand dollars.
And here's another option to renew the contract for the existing firm that we have now, C S G. Ms. Cosby.
Do we know of any other school districts that handle this internally?
I am certainly aware of some that do, but I would have to do a more thorough investigation of Virginia districts to understand that. I would add that as we build out our engagement office, that this sort of work is certainly something that with the appropriate staffing, we would be able to potentially take on internally to drive as part of our larger engagement agenda.
Ms. Cosby. Well, I would like to get more information, looking at other school districts in Virginia and how they handle their lobbying. I'm not sure if hiring a lobbyist firm is necessarily the right move for us. We've done that in years past. This year, for example, I think we were just woefully behind the eight ball when it came to our lobbying efforts with the General Assembly. And I hope that that does not continue going forward.
Ms. Owen, Ms. Dorr.
Okay, I would be interested also to know that. I think larger school systems generally do have a lobbyist, and as part of our engagement, if we were to hire a person full-time for us, I think that would definitely cost more even than that. But also, I would, Scott Barlow and Patrick Sapini are the ones who have worked with the legislation this year, and neither one of them is here with us this evening, so I would certainly feel more comfortable if they could be part of the discussion going forward.
Ms. Dorr.
Yeah, I was going to make that point, but I think if we could look at not just Virginia, that's going to be a lot of extra work, but other states, because I feel like, I know that Massachusetts, Pennsylvania, California, I think, have all led more successful efforts than maybe we have in terms of fixing funding, state funding formulas, and I feel like if we're really going to get serious about addressing the L C I, we should look at best practices where others have been successful. So anyway.
The administration would be more than willing to hire a person full-time internally to take on this work exclusively for next year. I do think it would cost more than the forty-eight thousand that I understand is the annual cost of the current contract. I don't know what the exact number would be, but I can certainly do some market research and come back to the board with what the cost for such an individual might be, so that we could have someone full-time on this advocating and strategizing throughout the
Ms. Gibson and Ms. Young.
I would be interested to find out, too, within the state, those other school districts that look like our district, you know, what is the approach that they're taking? And, I mean, when we're looking at these lobbying efforts, oftentimes, there's a lot of similarities, and so if there is a resource that they're working with that, you know, might be stronger, working with multiple systems, that might be something to consider as well.
Ms. Young.
Well, I've thought about keeping my powder dry on this, but because I'm so transparent, let me just convey that, at least for yours truly, one person, I'd be opposed to hiring another staff person downtown. I don't think that's what we need, but I look forward to the deliberation.
Just to add to that discussion, I think we all played a big part in the lobbying efforts. I know Ms. Gibson, Ms. Cosby, myself, Ms. Dorr, we all participated and supported a lot of the lobbying efforts. So I agree with my colleagues to really do some more research, best practices, looking at localities very similar to us, and share their responsibility, because it may not warrant a full-time role, you know, maybe part-time. So cost effectiveness, which I know yours truly would agree to.
So how about I do some research and come back with a proposal for the board?
So also, Board members, be reminded, the existing contract is May thirty-first, so therefore, we need to make a decision by the second meeting this month. And Superintendent Camerson, is that enough time to pull that information?
By the thirty-first?
No, the twenty-first.
The twenty-first?
The second meeting.
I don't think it is, actually, if we're going to do a full analysis looking across the country.
Ms. Cosby.
I mean, we have to make a decision if we want to continue with this current, I'm sorry. We have to make a decision if we want to continue with this current firm, correct?
Yes, by May thirty-first.
But, so we can make that decision separately and then allow additional time for the administration to get back with us.
So Board members, are we in agreement with that? So we make a decision at our meeting on the twenty-first? So we make a decision at our meeting on the 21st? And also, this would give the administration additional time to do the research based on questions that board members propose. So first meeting in June?
Sure.
Okay. Next item?
The next item is 4.02, receive the Patrick Henry School of Science and Arts Charter Renewal Agreement.
Ms. Duska? Patrick Henry? Uh, yeah, sorry.
Okay, just, sorry about that. Um, board members on Board Docs, and I don't know, um, if we can either get it on the screen, because I don't know that we were able to get copies of it. But in any event, um, you will recall that you all approved the renewal of the Patrick Henry School of Science and Arts Charter back in March for a term of five years beginning July 1, 2018. And so, part of that conversation was about coming back before the board to actually look at and discuss the Charter Renewal Agreement document. There were, there were, um, you did receive a revised copy of the charter agreement from Patrick Henry directly, I believe. And you also received on March the 5th, the recommendation and report from the Charter Renewal Committee, excuse me, Charter School Committee for Richmond Public Schools that had some recommendations with respect to the charter agreement language that we are, um, going to be looking at. For, I guess, for your ease of, I guess, review, and we won't go through all of this tonight, because some of it is not, um, there are changes, but they're not substantive changes to the agreement. So I will not labor the time and go over each and every change of addition to renewal and the language and all that. But you do have a side-by-side agreement that's posted. Once you can get to it, that has the current agreement on the left side and provisions of the proposed agreement on the right side. And just to match, so to speak, paragraph for paragraph, what's being proposed. The language that is on the right side in the proposed agreement that is, that is in red represents the revisions as proposed by Patrick Henry. There, you will see in certain sections and on certain pages, blue writing that is, that represents recommendations that are made on behalf of Richmond Public Schools or for your consideration. A couple of them are in response to the Charter Review Committee's recommendation, and some others were just based on, um, honestly, my review and wanting to make sure that there's some continuity in the language in certain areas. So I will, okay, so I thought we were gonna get it on the screen. It's not, okay, well, okay. So somebody, so people have it on Board Docs in front of you? Okay, great. So as I said, uh, your, your Charter Renewal Agreement is broken down into several articles. And I will bring your attention to page 11. And again, I, as I always do, I ask you to review the document in its entirety. We are not voting on this tonight. We are gonna be, you all are gonna be voting on this on your May 21st, perhaps, if we're ready for that. But it does need to be in place beginning, um, July 1st so that Patrick Henry can start the, the next term with what we've agreed to. But the language is ongoing. I have been in communication via email with Ms. McLillard, who is the, um, President of Patrick Henry Board of Directors. And I did get some feedback from her regarding some of the changes that the Review Committee is seeking to make as well. And so, I bring your attention to changes that were made on page 11 regarding the intercession language and the accountability plan language. And again, red is Patrick Henry, blue is Richmond Public, is, is. Blue would be the language that we're proposing from, on your behalf. And again, this is an ongoing conversation. So the idea is that after today, I will communicate with Patrick Henry to get their input as to the changes that, of course, we're seeking to make. So accountability plan, intercession, please look at that. Financial reporting, um, we're adding back in that Patrick Henry shall post online each year fiscal statement reflecting its income and expenses that have been proposed to be deleted. For the facilities, you will see a big gap of information that appears to be missing on the right side of this. But if, as you may recall, you weren't necessarily on the board, but you may recall that the facilities was a big issue, or a big component, rather, of the Patrick Henry Charter School Agreement originally. And, um, there were some renovation schedules that were due under the charter agreement that are no longer applicable, because that work has been done with respect to ADA compliance. And there is some significant deletion of language that's in the current agreement to bring it current to where they are today. That is on page 13. On page 19, an update with respect to the student code of responsible, responsible ethics. Also, um, in dealing with the removal of students who are not expelled or long-term suspended from Patrick Henry, we've proposed some language in there that would allow for some agreement by Patrick Henry and Richmond Public Schools to allow students to remain at Patrick Henry. But again, that is subject to review by Patrick Henry and agreement with them. And so, the idea is that a, a student can be removed if they're not long-term or short-term suspended for certain circumstan, under certain circumstances. But we've just added language in there that promotes a conversation between RPS and PHSSA. That's also in response to one of the recommendations by the renewal, the Charter Review Group from Richmond Public Schools regarding, um, speaking to special education disputes, but we will get to that more precisely in a minute. But that's, um, a place where I thought that we could benefit from, from some flexibility. On page 20, leading up to that, it's a good segue into what I was just speaking of. We've proposed to add a paragraph that says special, regarding special education disputes and due process proceedings, saying that in the event of a special education dispute or due process proceeding involving a PHSSA student, PHSSA will fully cooperate with the findings of the due process hearing officer and/or RPS personnel regarding the enrollment of the student in the PHSSA program. Again, that was a recommendation from the Charter Review Committee. It's subject to comment and review from the, uh, from Patrick Henry. And I do have their comments in general. They believe that their special education section is strong enough, and wording is strong enough, but they are open, um, to a conversation about it. They believe in theory they've had a positive relationship and will work together whenever issues arises, whenever an issue arises. But, um, their concern is having some explicit language, believing that they would have to follow the direction would undermine the spirit of autonomy that the charter school would have. So I say all of that to, again, bring forth that they do have some concern about adding that particular provision or provisions of that nature. But we'll talk about that and bring back some language if this is not satisfactory for Patrick Henry. Yes, I will be discussing the proposed language to Patrick Henry, with Patrick Henry, rather. They didn't get a, I did send a copy of this side-by-side to them, and, um, we'll talk this week about that. Another deleted section is the IB section on page 23. That section is proposed to be deleted in its entirety. On page 25, another, um, recommendation of the Charter Review Committee was to add language that, um, Patrick Henry would need to clearly explain to parents the purpose of the bus hub, the bus hub stops and the process of working with RPS people transportation to establish the new hub stops. So, in an effort to not be as detailed with respect to bus hub stops, I don't know the system in which Patrick Henry will continue to use in ULS transportation. I've proposed to say that Patrick Henry will ensure that parents are fully, parents and guardians are fully advised of any and all available transportation options. That's page 25. On page 26, uh, we, Patrick Henry has proposed language to clarify the expectation with respect to parental involvement. And, um, we know that because Patrick Henry is a unique environment, they heavily rely on and expect parents and guardians to participate in the, pro, in the, in the life of the school, yes, parent involvement, I'm sorry. And, um, so they've added some clarification to that. And I, I have proposed to add back in that the parent or guardian may appeal any enrollment decision made pursuant to this particular paragraph to the principal. Just so that parents, if they get a decision that says that their student is removed from the school for any reason, they can all, they can just appeal that to the, to the principal. I see that I have come to the end of my post-its. So that means that the rest of the language that, um, you see for, that are, that's in red or blue are, again, not substantive changes to the language. I would ask that you review the language. And at the same time that I'm having conversations with Patrick Henry regarding the language that we've added, please give me your feedback and questions or concerns by May 15th, so that we can move this forward and be in a good position to have you all be able to approve the final version of the agreement before July 1st. Are there any questions or concerns at present?
So, board members, please be reminded that Ms. Lily needs feedback by May 15th. And also, we have the clerk to remind board members as well, to make sure that you provide feedback by the 15th of May. Next item?
The next item is 4.03, receive reports from board members on external committees for board assignments and conferences attended.
Board members, please be reminded, as you have commitments to external committees, that you are responsible for reporting out to the board as well as providing a written documentation for the school board records. We have to be reminded ourselves of accountability and transparency. Um, I did attend a forum last week, a discussion on education policies with Secretary John King. It was very, very informative. The topics that, um, were discussed, um, were centered around discipline, school climate and culture, and trauma-informed care. And a part of, in attendance, we had members from the General Assembly, delegation, senators, as well as delegates. It was sponsored by the Black Caucus. Senator McCullin was in attendance, as well as Delegate Bagby, Delegate Ward. There was a couple, few others. Can't remember their names, but I know that was the Richmond delegation. Um, but again, as I stated before, and some of the key points I wanted to, to bring out, as they talked about the school climate and trauma-informed care, they talked about, um, making sure that our teachers and principals were well-prepared, high quality and early, early learning. So as we tackle some of the challenges that we are experiencing, really focus on it, early learning. Also, um, quality professional development. And I know that's a topic of discussion oftentimes that we, um, we hear. Um, competitive pay to attract and retain our teachers, because we want to keep the best of the best working for our children, because they deserve that, and, yes, we deserve that as a district. And also, they talked about diversifying the education workforce. That was very critical, um, and something that we as a district, we need to focus on. Prepare and training for a diverse environment and training in diverse curriculum. So again, um, it was very informative, and just want to share with you key points that were discussed at this panel. And then I will provide a written document that I will submit to the clerk for our records. And also, our cabinet member was in attendance, Dr. Sade. She's in the audience tonight, so she also served on the panel. And Dr. Newsom, the Diversity Coordinator from Himariko, her name. Yes, Monica Mans from Himariko, and then Dr. Newsom. I'm sorry, the Superintendent from Chesterfield, Dr. Lane. That's why I don't like calling out names, because you will forget. But anyway, I will submit that information to the clerk. Ms. Cosby?
Uh, so, I think those topics were wonderful, but did they talk about resources?
So, that was a question that I had for them, because as they, um, were talking about trauma-informed care, supporting, improving the culture and climate. And so, my question to them was, how do we leverage our dollars? Because in the state of Virginia, our funding is not up to par as well as the city. And so, that's when they talked about a focus on early learning, childhood, early learning, um, you know, really putting a focus on that. And, I have my notes in my phone. So they talked about leveraging our dollars with, um, really preparing our teachers and principals. High-quality early learning was critical. So encouraging our parents, guardians, when that child is at school age-appropriate, really promoting that information to ensure that our parents and guardians are registering our kids for pre-K, VPI, Head Start. So really, really, um, pushing that information out there. And the last item was quality professional development. And the pay, yeah, quality professional development.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On that point, I suspect everybody around the table saw some really interesting data that confirmed for me, but I had, prior to said that, I had to rely on anecdotal experiences and/or conversations, and specifically, if I recall, the, the quantity, I think it was like 280, approximately 280 teachers in RPS weighed in on the topic of professional development. Something, something between 70 and 80% conveyed a real concern and a reservation, and specifically said that, uh, they didn't get anything out of it. And so, everybody around this table knows I've introduced an alternative kind of proposal. Look forward to doing that again, but pleased to hear that other. to hear that other school districts rightly identify that one of the reasons that we continue to lose teachers is often because we don't treat them like the adults that they are, and often waste their, their time with something that doesn't, that doesn't merit their, their valuable, most valuable commodity or resource, either time. Thank you for letting me opine.
And also, something else that was very alarming, and I'm sure we all have heard this, the statistics around the table, African-American males are suspended four times more than white counterparts and Asians. And also, students with disabilities. And that information was very, very deserving. So, you know, we have a lot of work to do, a lot of work to do in this district. Thank you. Ms. Burke.
This past month, Ms. Orin, Linda Orins and I attended the compact meeting. And it was a compact committee meeting. The big item was addressing or listing all the after-school programs, which there are several. So what we suggested, a manner in which to connect for our children, for instance, let's say they go to the YWCA, or go to Boys and Girls Club, they have a set of rules. They come to school, they have a set of rules. In the neighborhood, they have a set of rules. In their homes, they have another set of expectations. How we can better work together, so at our next meeting, hopefully we'll have some data to be able to send out one consistent message, which addresses what I think you also were just speaking of as well. All right, so that was a big part of our discussion during that compact meeting. So we look forward to our next meeting to receive that. And I'll write it up. Linda and I will write that up. And also, the REA, I'm the designated, and we meet monthly this past, that's with the president and the director. There were three items that we discussed at length. One was the opportunity to address the death leave. Previously, years back, it was five days. In the past couple of years or so, it's moved to three days for immediate family. And the REA is asking that we revisit that, when you lose an immediate family member, to have five days as it was before. And as we well know, that's, I guess it's not my position to agree or disagree, just to give you the information. But that is a concern that the REA would like the board to address. The other item is licensure to ten years. REA was very, very, very instrumental in having that ten-year licensure place in, in place, excuse me, for teachers and educators, so we don't have to do the five years anymore. But this year, you have to still, if this twenty-eighteen year license runs out, you do have to, I know. Then after that, it changes. And the other item, which also reflects upon what you just stated, Madam Chair, professional training on diversity, bullying, and school climate. And being mindful that diversity doesn't mean just a mix of children. What is truly diversity? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Moving to the next item.
The next item is item five, administration business, five point zero one, receive an update on the memorandum of understanding with the Virginia Board of Education and the corrective action plan.
In short, we have begun a series of meetings with the Department of Education. The next one is scheduled for the fourteenth, which is going to be a full-day meeting with the administration and with representatives from the DOE, to begin to discuss the process of creating a new corrective action plan, which will align with the strategic plan, so we don't have competing documents. And so we're going to kick off that conversation on the fourteenth. And the goal is, just as with the strategic plan, to have that completed by the fall, to have the same with the corrective action plan, and then to have a very clear way to report out our progress against that plan on a monthly basis, so that the public and the board certainly can have an understanding of our progress towards meeting those objectives.
Thank you. Next item.
The next item is five point zero two, discuss, discuss the strategic vision plan.
Excellent. Good evening. We're going to reference this document, so either you can look at it in hard copy or on Word docs, for those of you who do have internet access. We have some cool stuff to share online, if you have internet access. So if you do, keep your computers open and ready. I'm very, very excited about this process, to finally kick this off and begin in a citywide conversation about our dreams for RPS, and where we want to take the system over the next five years and beyond. And one of the reasons I'm so excited is because I have gotten to meet our kids in every single one of our schools, and they are simply wonderful. And I genuinely get up every morning thinking, how can we do even more for them? And so I'm so excited to be able to begin this conversation across the city, to chart that path. Before we start dreaming big, though, I wanted to center us in what happens when we don't help our kids meet their dreams, and what is at stake. And so, I wanted to do a group reading, we'll do line by line, of Langston Hughes's poem Harlem, more popularly known as Dream Deferred. And so I'm going to ask Ms. Page to start with the first line, and then we're going to make our way around the table. Everyone read one line, and then we're just going to pause in silence for one minute, to give folks a chance to process, journal if you would like, what this says to you. Ms. Page?
What happens to a dream deferred?
Does it dry up like a raisin in the sun?
Or fester like a sore?
Like honey, does it stick like rotten meat, water crust and sugar over?
Like a syrupy sweet?
Maybe it just sags?
Like a heavy load?
Or does it explode? Just take one minute to reflect.
Would anybody like to share their reflection?
Ms. Orin?
I guess I was reflecting on hearing some students who maybe have had some challenges in school. And when you ask them what their dreams or their goals are, and they don't have them, and maybe that's just that.
This is a soapbox topic for me, so, because I recognize none of us have time for that. I'll just share that I am convinced that there, you know, twenty-four thousand kids in RPS, I don't know a percentage, but I suspect it's really rather high, that there are a lot of students that, to Linda's point, perhaps haven't fully articulated what their dream is, because candidly, we do not provide them access to a world big enough where they could fully formulate an informed opinion on that dream. And so, look forward to doing everything we can to change that, introduce them to as many, for example, kinds of persons, doing as many kinds of things as possible, augmenting their career, career awareness, that they're really savvy consumers in regards to all the kinds of professions out there. And not to limit dreams, of course, to professions, but I think it's relevant to other kinds of dreams, too. Anyone else?
Ms. Burke? This poem was written in nineteen fifty-one, and it's so unfortunate, in the year two thousand eighteen, so many of our children continuously have their dreams deferred. And that's, that's, I'm here to try to do my best, and then someone, I think all of us are, to take this to the next level, because we're losing too many of our children. We're losing too many of our children. Nineteen fifty-one, twenty eighteen, same battles, unfortunate. Thank you for this poem.
I'll share. What happens to a dream deferred? Our children are so, so talented, but we often put limitations on their experiences, their opportunities, based on where they, where they live, based on access to transportation, to realize those experiences, those opportunities. So oftentimes, our students' dreams are crushed based on what they hear in the media, what they hear, you know, other people say about RPS. And because of that, they settle. And I am not going to settle, because our children deserve the best. And I want them to realize their dreams, and I know that they can. But we as the adults have to put forth more of an effort, because our children's dreams should not be deferred, and will not, if I have anything to do with it. And I know I'm only one person.
Thank you. Well, we are not going to settle, and we are going to dream big. And to get us started, we have a video. Is it ready to roll? Our dreams are being deferred by the filter. No. As we're getting that set up, I wanted to share with everybody that on our homepage, rvaschools.net, you'll now see on the landing page, on the homepage, it says, share your dreams for RPS with the hashtag dreams, the number four, RPS. And so we're inviting the public, everyone, students, educators, families, support staff, interested community members, to share their dreams with that hashtag. When you click on the view more from our homepage, it takes you to a site that is dedicated just for the strategic planning process, to gather feedback from everybody in the communities, again, students, families, staff members, and community members. And that website launches with a video, which we'll show once we get that taken care of. But let me, we're going to explore three questions tonight. And this experience that we're going to do tonight will be very similar to the experience that teachers will do, and kids will do, and families will do, and that we're encouraging organizations across the city to do. So if you have a civic association, or your company, or your church, or your synagogue, or your family reunion, whatever it is, we are encouraging folks to engage in this experience that we're going to do now. And then share your thoughts online on the website, and we'll make other ways for folks to share it as well. You can also get it on your phone, it's mobile-friendly. So again, go to rvaschools.net and click on the view more, and you can see all the information that we're discussing right now. So let's start with question one. Want to start with all the great things that are going on in RPS. And so what I'd like you to do is to take two minutes and jot down individually, what do you love most about RPS right now? What do you love most about RPS? Go ahead and make your list. As many as you'd like. Once you have your solid list of things you love, turn to the person next to you and briefly share your list, and then we'll share out as a group. All right. I'd love to do a quick whip-around. You get to say one thing that you love about RPS. Want to start?
Sure.
It's always got to be the students, the children. They're marvelous.
The many programs and opportunities that we offer our students.
Of the teachers and staff.
Leave it to me. I love that we have arrived at a place, because we are not achieving as a country, as a state, or as a district, that stakeholders willing, perhaps, and I put that in parentheses to get radical, about K-12 education.
I'm next. Our students, our babies.
I took out a rich history that we should be both thoroughly proud of, but also gives us so much opportunity to learn from. And, and that, because of that rich history, that I feel that people are here with intention, specifically staff and teachers, that is. And I think there's a lot of power that comes with that intention.
I put the everyday surprises, little things that I learn, and little nuggets of awesomeness that just pop into my inbox, or in daily encounters every day or week. So I learned recently, there's a planetarium at TJ. There's a teacher that plays band music almost every morning the kids walk into Mumford. A group of kids at Hill Middle envisioned and successfully ran a fundraiser to get a water filling station. There's a Be the Change Club. There's a hilarious 1980s auction with parents to support the schools. And I think most, the thing that surprises me the most is the number of people that are willing to be a part of the solution. I can't, I think we can all say that there are a number of people that come up to us and say, "How can I help, and how can I get involved?" And I think that's really exciting about our community in general.
I said my teachers and the staff at my school, who pushed me to be my best, and just are amazing all the way around, so I had to say them.
Is there a special teacher you want to give a shout-out to?
I'd shout out everyone if I could. But I'd have to actually say Ryan Eldridge, who is our secretary at Open High School. She is nothing but loving and supportive, and I couldn't make it through my senior year without her, so.
Is there anything else anyone wanted to add that was on your list that maybe didn't come up?
I'll shout out some principals, too.
Let's not add any more individual names. We'll let the students, yeah.
Ms. Cosby and Ms. Burke?
It's kind of, I mean, it's not specific, but I call it the CPHs, that I feel when I'm going to a school, the one is hope. You just feel there's, especially when you sit around, I know people, it's just an overwhelming sense of hope that, I don't even know their thing, but I feel something better, and hunger, hunger for something different. And having happiness when they accomplish something, and when they accomplish something, so those are my major priorities.
Ms. Burke? Mine is similar to Mrs. Cosby's. The possibilities that are before us. This is a great time to be a part of rich and public schools. As Ms. Gibson stated, acknowledging our past, building upon it, but also what's before us. The time is now.
Well, also, my favorite part, as many of you said, is our kids. From big, big hugs I've gotten at Broad Rock, to learning about DNA at Open, to lots of other extraordinary experiences in between. Everywhere I go, in every single one of our schools, I'm impressed and inspired by our young people. That will, I imagine, always be my favorite thing about RPS. So let's start dreaming. Turn the page. The second question that we want everyone to engage in is, what are your dreams for RPS? And so just to help you begin thinking, we'll get concrete, but just let's start by listing three adjectives that you want everyone to use when describing RPS. In our ideal state, if we achieved all our dreams, what are the three adjectives? When you met somebody, you were recruiting a teacher, or talking to a parent, or talking to a colleague, they would say, "Oh, let me tell you about RPS." It is blank, blank, and blank. About our school system, about RPS. We're going to take it as a given that our students are extraordinary. Now we know, Burke. We'll finish with it. Okay, we're going to go around three times to hear your three adjectives, and this time, we're going to start with Abby.
I guess my first one is supportive slash supported.
Vibrant.
Resource.
Be bold.
Entrepreneurial.
Innovative.
Fantastic.
Praiseworthy.
Well organized.
Inclusive.
Community-driven.
Be great.
Autonomy for teachers.
Deberse.
Empowering.
Collaborative.
Innovative.
Creative. Inclusive. RPS be the choice for every family in the city of Richmond.
Flipped classrooms.
Great.
Excellence. Exciting.
I think that, was that three rounds? Yeah, all right. Excellent. So what I'd like to do now is to begin to think about, well, how would we make those adjectives come true? What would we need to achieve to make the dream of those adjectives come true? So I want you to take the next two minutes and think about, what are your dreams for RPS? What should it look like? What should it feel like? What should the experience be like? What should teachers, and kids, and families say and experience as they go through our system? Paint a picture for what your RPS dream looks like, listing all the things that we would need to do to make that a reality. So we're going to begin this, take a couple of minutes to do some individual reflection, and then we'll connect with the person next to you, and then we'll have a large group discussion to try to surface your dreams and the things we need to do to make them a reality.
Would you eat?
Would we get eat?
All right. All right. I'm gonna just open this up in no particular order. I'm gonna just open this up in no particular order. If you'd like to kick us off, share your dream. If you'd like to kick us off, share your dream.
All right, I'm going. All right, I'm going. All right. All right.
Imagine that. Imagine that.
Imagine that. Imagine that. All right. All right. But I'll be respectful and just do one at a time and then come back. But I'll be respectful and just do one at a time and then come back. So for the purpose- So for the purpose-
How many pages you got there? How many pages you got there?
Well, it's only one. Well, it's only one.
Okay. Okay.
For the purpose of being entrepreneurial, one, reward risk takers even when they break rules. For the purpose of being entrepreneurial, one, reward risk takers even when they break rules. And don't penalize folks that stick their neck out. And don't penalize folks that stick their neck out. So that's entrepreneurial. So that's entrepreneurial. I'll come back to the other two later. I'll come back to the, the other two later. Unless y'all would like for me to get mine out of the way? Unless y'all would like for me to get mine out of the way? Just do it? Just do it? Okay. Okay. All right. All right. For number two, autonomy for teachers. For number two, autonomy for teachers. Autonomy for teachers, number two, de-emphasize lesson plans. Autonomy for teachers, number two, de-emphasize lesson plans. And allow teachers to develop their own metrics for what constitutes success. And allow teachers to develop their own metrics for what constitutes success. Three, for flipped classroom, incentivize classrooms that accommodate students speaking more than the instructor. Three, for flipped classroom, incentivize classrooms that accommodate students speaking more than the instructor. And design, build new facilities absent 19th, 20th century dog and pony show or chalk talk pedagogy. And design, build new facilities absent 19th, 20th century dog and pony show or chalk talk pedagogy. That's it. That's it. Not that much. Not that much.
All right. All right. I'd like to see us move away from any sense of a can't do culture I'd like to see us move away from any sense of a can't do culture and have more of a can do attitude. and have more of a can do attitude. So that includes a robust curriculum with lots of electives and foreign languages, So that includes a robust curriculum with lots of electives and foreign languages, teachers and principals that feel empowered and supported to practice their crafts, teachers and principals that feel empowered and supported to practice their crafts, students that are prepared for the 21st century workforce students that are prepared for the 21st century workforce and have a choice for their post-graduation plans, whether that be college or career, whatever else they choose. and have a choice for their post-graduation plans, whether that be college or career, whatever else they choose. But also recognizing that school is not just about getting a job or going to college, But also recognizing that school is not just about getting a job or going to college, that it's preparing students to be thoughtful, committed citizens of this world. that it's preparing students to be thoughtful, committed citizens of this world. My vision would be for all schools to have equitable resources, My vision would be for all schools to have equitable resources, for the food to be healthy, for us to have social and emotional learning standards, for the food to be healthy, for us to have social and emotional learning standards, plenty of extracurriculars and lots of sports. plenty of extracurriculars and lots of sports.
Ms. Burke? Ms. Burke? I'm a welcoming environment in all of our schools. I'm a welcoming environment in all of our schools. All schools are fully staffed, technology up to date, All schools are fully staffed, technology up to date, resources beyond the school walls, which means lots of hands-on opportunities and field trips. resources beyond the school walls, which means lots of hands-on opportunities and field trips. Mental health support beyond what we currently have, Mental health support beyond what we currently have, really just the opportunity to address our children's needs. really just the opportunity to address our children's needs. An active PTA that serves as advocates for children and partners. An active PTA that serves as advocates for children and partners. Night school. Night school. Many of our students, particularly in high school, work six to eight hours after school every day. Many of our students, particularly in high school, work six to eight hours after school every day. What happened if they could go to work during the day and then go to school at night to finish up? What happened if they could go to work during the day and then go to school at night to finish up? A teacher current resource site. A teacher current resource site. And of course, to be fully accredited by whose ever standard. And of course, to be fully accredited by whose ever standard.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Gibson? Ms. Gibson? So my, my dream is that we don't punish schools and teachers for the ills of society
So my, my dream is that we, we don't punish schools and, and teachers for the ills of society
and that our schools are funded to meet the needs of our students.
and that our schools are funded to meet the needs of our students. And that the, that the school buildings and, and the programs within those buildings
And that the, that the school buildings and the programs within those buildings reflect the diversity of our entire city.
reflect the diversity of our entire city.
And that as we look at our goal, that we're able to move beyond test scores
And that as we look at our goal, that we're able to move beyond test scores
and, and consider the larger goal of creating students that are able to participate
and, and consider the larger goal of creating students that are able to participate
as engaged citizens when, when their children are in school
as engaged citizens when, when their children are in school
and to, to drive the community-driven model that I believe public education is founded on.
and to, to, to drive the community-driven model that I believe public education is, is founded on.
Ms. Owen? Ms. Owen?
Well, Ms. Burke and I really had a lot of the same thing. Well, Ms. Burke and I really had a lot of the same thing. So I, we both started off with welcoming and I had welcoming to all. So I, we both started off with welcoming and I had welcoming to all. Beautiful, well-resourced, I like that term, Ms. Gibson. Beautiful, well-resourced, I like that term, Ms. Gibson. With working up-to-date technology and flexible. With working up-to-date technology and flexible. And flexible scheduling, with workspaces, with student and teacher supports. And flexible scheduling, with workspaces, with student and teacher supports. Just flexible, not rigid and collaborative. Just flexible, not rigid and collaborative. So, and I'm sort of referencing a sermon here about grapevines, well-pruned grapevines. So, and I'm sort of referencing a sermon here about grapevines, well-pruned grapevines. Have to work this way and this way. Have to work this way and this way. Because that's the way they, you know, they want to grow this way, but we also want it to go this way. Because that's the way they, you know, they want to grow this way, but we also want it to go this way. So collaborative. So collaborative.
Nothing about levers? Nothing about levers?
A lot of that was well-resourced and flexible. A lot of that was well-resourced and flexible. I didn't have to get more specific. I didn't have to get more specific.
Ms. Cosby? Ms. Cosby?
So my dreams for RPS is that we create students who are highly sought after So my dreams for RPS is that we create students who are highly sought after by both employers and colleges alike because they're so well-prepared and knowledgeable. by both employers and colleges alike because they're so well-prepared and knowledgeable. That we have a well-rounded curriculum that's not just about teaching to standards That we have a well-rounded curriculum that's not just about teaching to standards or about remediation, but also enrichment. or about remediation, but also enrichment. That we have diversity and is not the same cookie cutter experience, That we have diversity and is not the same cookie cutter experience, both in terms of the bricks and mortar and in programming and that we both in terms of the bricks and mortar and in programming and that we teach our children, help them learn how to dream and learn to be critical thinkers. teach our children, help them learn how to dream and learn to be critical thinkers. And that we also merge, not just the, we merge the sciences with the romances, with the Renaissance. And that we also merge, not just the, we merge the sciences with the romances, with the Renaissance.
Ms. Amy? Ms. Amy?
My dream for RPS is that our curriculum mimics that at High Tech High,
My dream for RPS is that our curriculum mimics that at High Tech High,
which is a high school that was highlighted in the documentary Most Likely to Succeed.
which is a high school that was highlighted in the documentary Most Likely to Succeed.
At High Tech High, their curriculum and classrooms has intertwined subjects
At High Tech High, their curriculum and classrooms has intertwined subjects
supported by hands-on, year-long projects.
supported by hands-on, year-long projects.
Okay. Okay. I kept mine pretty simple. I kept mine pretty simple. Funding, funding, funding. Funding, funding, funding. Appropriate funding to support the dreams, the resources, experiences. Appropriate funding to support the dreams, the resources, experiences. The appropriate funding to realize the greatness of our students. The appropriate funding to realize the greatness of our students. Appropriate funding to create a happy and nurturing learning environment Appropriate funding to create a happy and nurturing learning environment that's clean, the state-of-the-art, state-of-the-art building, facilities, that's clean, the state-of-the-art, state-of-the-art building, facilities, state-of-the-art curriculum. state-of-the-art curriculum. And teachers, the best of the best. And teachers, the best of the best.
Anybody want to add anything after hearing everyone? Anybody want to add anything after hearing everyone? Okay. Okay. We're gonna go to question three. We're gonna go to question three. As we strive to achieve those dreams, all of those incredible things that we just listed, As we strive to achieve those dreams, all of those incredible things that we just listed, and I have a fantastic list of about over a hundred, hundred dreams. and I have a fantastic list of about over a hundred, hundred dreams. Question is, what should we prioritize for the next five years? Question is, what should we prioritize for the next five years? Knowing we want to do all of it as fast as we possibly can, Knowing we want to do all of it as fast as we possibly can, but knowing also that sometimes big things take time. but knowing also that sometimes big things take time. And so the protocol for this one, And so the protocol for this one, you can start by saying to yourself, if we achieved these five things, you can start by saying to yourself, if we achieved these five things, I, that is in your, in your head, I would consider it a success. I, that is in your, in your head, I would consider it a success. And then what I want you to do is to write the headline for the RTV article in 2023, And then what I want you to do is to write the headline for the RTV article in 2023, we can help Justin out here, we can help Justin out here, that will capture what we have achieved over the five years. that will capture what we have achieved over the five years. And if you are up to it, give me the, the lead, give me the first couple of sentences of that first paragraph, And if you are up to it, give me the, the lead, give me the first couple of sentences of that first paragraph, which is going to describe what we have achieved in those five years. which is going to describe what we have achieved in those five years. Go ahead again, take some time to personally reflect. Go ahead again, take some time to personally reflect. And then we'll share them. And then we'll share them. Justin's gonna remind us all that the editors write the headlines. Justin's gonna remind us all that the editors write the headlines.
That's true. That's true.
Okay, you pick up the free press, you see Ron's article, and the headline says,
RPS is leading the region in innovative educational learning that focuses on with academics, athletics, arts, and inclusivity. RPS is leading the region.
Teachers leave counties to teach in the city. A new paradigm relevant to both workplace and student culture, provided for entrepreneurial, provided entrepreneurial privilege, autonomy for teachers and for classrooms, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. This whole media thing is hard. I didn't write it in the narrative. All right, so just principals are treated, principals are treated like founder of the business that launched an IPO, initial public offering, teachers are treated like CEO.
Richmond Public Schools exceeds expectations. Now, do not have my paragraph. I'm working on it. Richmond Public Schools wins national award for excellence. Because there's a great teacher in every classroom. There's a welcoming culture in every school. They're all fully functioning buildings. There is plenty of student and teacher support with the resources necessary to do the work.
This one's too easy. Richmond fully funds schools. Oh, wait, we had that headline.
RPS leads the country as an innovative district supporting teachers and empowering students. Wow, over the last five years, this amazing school board and their fearless leader, Jason Camrus, have led the community to excellence. RPS is now a center of innovation and teachers and principals are lining up for the opportunity to teach at RPS. Students love the district's new robust course load and elective offerings and creative classes. Enrollment is up, schools are more diverse and inclusive than ever, and RPS is a system of choice for all families in the city.
RPS, number one, who would have thought? I don't have my introductory paragraph, but I do have five points that I thought you should work on first. Number one is improved, dependable technology. My teachers spend multiple minutes in our classrooms trying to fix their computer because they thought the PowerPoint was going to work, but apparently there was a block and their password changed because, who would have thought? Number two, that wages of teachers are increased. Number three, safe buildings, which is my three and four. The three one would be that rodents are eliminated. I can't tell you how many times I've seen a dead rat or living cockroach in my classroom, worried that they're going to come into my bag instead of worrying about what my teacher is saying. My number four is that the locks are improved on the doors and that camera monitors on the outside of our buildings are improved. My secretary can't see the face of the person entering our building, so she lets them in blindly, hoping that they're not holding a gun. And my last one is that the food in our schools improved, that their nutritional value increases. A good portion of our students live in food deserts. So the only fruits and vegetables they see is on their lunch tray, which is usually canned corn or canned green beans.
I didn't focus so much on the headline, but the editors can edit it. RPS takes a line from Drake from the bottom to the top. In 2018, Gwendolyn Davis sat in her living room frustrated and nervous. She was sending her five-year-old to the neighborhood school that was plagued with too few resources, low test scores, and insufficient means. I got to work on that, the editor would have to work on that. Today, Gwendolyn is one of the 10,000 new parents who decided to take a chance on RPS. And she is beaming as her fifth grade, as her daughter graduates the fifth grade, and so is her daughter Eva. When asked about her favorite part of school, she says everything. Today, RPS goes not only for accreditation, but is the sought-after district in the region.
I think that was everyone, yes?
But it's not, it's not headline worthy. I just think it's really important that as we're thinking about prioritizing, that one of those things is that we take on a manageable amount of change. And, and so, you know, I mean, it's not, it's not a headline worthy story. In fact, it's to the contrary, we're very eager to want to make progress and to want to make it very, very quickly. But then, you know, listening to the story of the teacher who was, you know, frustrated with this new AEP software, and there are many, many other stories that are similar, what it reflects to me is that, is that we, in our, in our desire, which is coming from the best place, and sometimes the desire is not from us, but from state regulations and such that we may not have a choice on. But, but when we do have that choice, I want to, I think it's really important that we take on what we can chew. And I think that that is also, you know, is how we build trust because we're able to accomplish the things in an effective way, the way that we say we're going to, because we've been, you know, very, very, you know, driven in what we want to accomplish and realistic in how we're going to get there.
So Kenya's remarks prompted me to think about somebody once said, going to use a word used a moment ago, work, or going to use a word used a moment ago, specifically culture eats strategy for lunch. And I think that a lot of organizations miss that all the time. And so for me, I do talk about culture all the time in RPS. And so for me, that really is to, perhaps to Kenya, or at least Kenya's remarks provide the impetus for what I'm saying now. Really, really, I want us to be intentional about culture and what kind of cultural values we want in RPS. Because partly to Kenya's point, Ms. Gibson's point, we can develop strategy all day long, but at the end of the day, workplace will eat, excuse me, culture will eat strategy's lunch.
Any other big thoughts? All right, I'm going to give Abby the last word on our visioning session. Before I do, let me just share that this part of the process is intentionally very high level to get people thinking big about the future. The idea is to do this at schools, in classrooms with kids led by their teachers, with faculties, with PTAs and other parent groups, and with all sorts of civic associations around the city. I'm going to ask the city council to do the same thing we just did. I'm going to ask the mayor and the city administrator and the cabinet to do what we just did. If you are a small business owner, I'm going to ask you to do it with your employees. If you are a faith leader, I'm going to ask you to do it with your house of worship. The idea is to get as many different people talking about these big questions and surfacing up ideas as we possibly can. That work is going to go on for the next couple of months, which will then distill down to some big themes, which will then turn into priorities and then ultimately goals and initiatives. But that's, that's a little bit down the road. Right now, I wanted everyone just to dream big. And so with that, I'm going to throw it to Abby, anything else you want to say?
Not off the top of the head, no. I wish I, I wish I did.
That's fair enough, you get to come back next time, too. All right. As I said, we have a website dedicated to capturing all this information. So anybody in the community who wants to go online right now, rvaschools.net, you can click where it says Dreams for RPS, and you can upload your answers to these questions. And we're hoping that the website can also be used as the repository when groups get together to share their information there. I do want to note that because it's built on Google, there's a little button on the top right that says translate. And you can translate the website by one click into Chinese, French, German, Haitian Creole, Hindi, Japanese, Burmese, Portuguese, Russian, and very importantly, Spanish. And so that's all you need to do, and the whole website is accessible in Spanish.
I, with the, I heard some feedback from parents that while it's great to have everything online and mobile accessible, if we could also have some paper copies available for
We will at the meetings, yes, absolutely. Any additional questions on that front? Great, now we have this amazing video featuring Hollywood's latest stars. And let's see. This is on the, on the website, and we invite folks to share it and link to it. My dream for RPS is that all 24,000 of our kids, of all backgrounds, have the opportunity to pursue their dreams, whatever they may be.
When I grow up, I want to be a movie star.
When I grow up, I want to be a scientist.
When I grow up, I want to be a teacher.
My dream for RPS is that every child, regardless of their background, their zip code, will have an amazing opportunity to learn.
I want our school system to be a place where every single one of our children is loved and embraced and celebrated for who they are every single day, and where they have the opportunity to be who they are and pursue their passions, whether that's art or music or history or math. And I want us to be the school system where when you meet an RPS graduate, you can ask them, what instrument do you play? What foreign language do you speak? What advanced mathematics or science class have you taken? Because every single one of our students will have achieved those things.
We want everyone to be engaged. We want everyone to take ownership.
We want everybody to be a part of this process, our students, their families, our staff.
Our parents and citizens working together to achieve a common goal is critical.
Join us, share your thoughts on our website, and come to one of our over 150 meetings, where we'll be thinking big and dreaming big about the future of RPS.
What are your dreams for RPS?
Well, some, two sueños for RPS.
For every child to be inspired.
Be brave.
Be thoughtful.
Be strong.
Be confident, be strong, and be RPS.
Go to our website at rvaschools.net and tell us your dreams.
What are your dreams for RPS?
We will excuse you, this is a school night. But before you leave, if you want to leave us some words.
I guess just don't give up. I think it's easy that people probably send their frustrated and annoyed and maybe they have given up themselves, and I think they easily come to you guys with those concerns. But I guess just don't take that to heart.
Thank you.
And we will see you on the 21st.
That's it for this visioning plan for right now. We'll revisit this at our next board meeting. Thank you.
The next item is 5.03, receive an update on the plan to ensure that policy is followed.
Sorry, I'm not quite sure what that is.
When we implement policies, this is
Just to update the board on a couple of the issues that we addressed last time, both the calculation of GPAs and the issue with respect to attendance policy and course credit. The work on the GPAs continues. We have been in contact with parents and making adjustments as we learn of additional issues. I will certainly, I do want to raise up that some issues are going to require a longer-term examination as we prepare for next year. But everything that we can address immediately, we are addressing immediately. And I encourage parents to continue to reach out if there are any additional issues that come up. Of course, we, we want them to raise those so that we can make sure that we're addressing every single thing. Similarly, on the course credit and the attendance issue, we are beginning the process to review the policy and look at similar districts to see what their policies say on that front and if we want to make modifications. But also certainly taking steps to be prepared next year to fully influence the policy 100%, whether it is as it currently exists or if we amend it over the course of the spring or summer in anticipation of next school year.
Item six, budgetary items, 6.01, receive a quarterly financial statement for Patrick Henry School of Science and Arts. Those documents were posted to board docs.
Ma'am, you are the order.
It was amended.
Yes, the agenda was amended. Next item.
Greetings, members of the board and administration. My name is Caesar Carvalos. I'm the secretary of the board of Patrick Henry School of Science and Arts. Filling in for our treasurer, who unfortunately is still recovering from recent surgery. But I assure you, our accountant has started coaching me. We submitted our financial documents. I wanted to point out our balance sheet for this quarter. If you take a look at the total checking savings amount, we have $86,654. Our total liabilities towards the bottom of page there are $4,600. And our total temporary reserve net assets are $22,115. So as you can see, we have enough total cash on hand to cover our liabilities and temporary reserve assets.
Any questions? Thank you.
The next item is 6.02, receive the financial statement for the period ended March 31st, 2018. These documents were also on board docs.
Yes, they are all there for review, and at this time, there are no significant concerns.
The next item is 6.03, receive a budget update.
So if you take a look at the document that is attached for 6.03, it's an update to our discussion last week around our FY18 capital balances. So we, if you have a chance to pull that up, if you don't have a computer, could we show it on the screen as well? So the colorful coding should look familiar. It's similar to the last time we discussed this. The difference is this is now showing as of the end of April, which is updated from our last discussion. So this is lagging by about a week. Well, you'll notice, and just as a refresher, the yellow is the money that was set aside, originally $18 million for planning and construction for the Southside Schools. You'll see, we're still at about $13.7 million, just as we were before. The green lines are all for ADA projects. You'll see towards the bottom there, one of those has been zeroed out with the additional encumbrances and expenditures now taken off. The blue, as we have discussed, is the pot of money that is available for routine maintenance and repairs, which is the item which gets discussed quite a bit throughout this budget season. And as you can see, we're at about $850,000 total remaining on that front. And then last, I added in pink for the bus lease payoff. As you recall, last time it was at zero. It's now at $107,000 because once we paid it off, we got refunded a bit of the interest payment. So we'll invest that So we'll invest that back into additional enhancements for buses that need it, whether it's cameras or repairs or whatever the case may be. Last, you'll see in purple, and remember, that was the $1.2 million that was set aside for the repairs. I told you that was going to be much lower this time because we've been spending it rapidly. As you can see, that $1.2 million is now $8,642. Any questions on any of that?
Ms. Young.
Do we have an idea of... So we appropriated $1.2 million for the purpose of safety and security. Actually, I thought it was $1.5. But do we have an idea of what the total cost would be if we were to address as we need to all of the different safety deficiencies in our buildings? Or is that a conversation perhaps later in the evening?
I defer to the board layer on that. I'm glad to share what our estimate of the lock and camera repairs is. It's about $1.3 million. That is not taken into consideration an issue which many individuals have raised, which is needing replacement keys.
Right.
And that's not also getting into all kinds of other enhancements you would do for security purposes, which I don't think would be appropriate to talk about publicly.
Right.
If you go to the next slide, oh, it's just the explanation of each section again for you. And then the last slide is my attempt to show you how we are beginning to match up with the city. So the top chart is the city's numbers as of this afternoon. They were emailed to me this afternoon. So in their funds, they have something called school planning and construction. And that's right now at roughly $8.6 million. Then they have a bucket called school capital maintenance. That's now at $8 million. For a total of about $16.6 million, which is significantly less than it was last time I shared with you because we reconcile a lot of encumbrances and expenditures over $5 million worth. Below, you'll see our data as of April 30th. The $13.7 million is from that yellow line. And then I have everything else. That's the $4.3 million. But remember, we can't actually spend most of that $4.3 million on repairs because it's ADA, or it's the bus lease, or it's for lock repairs. Only $850,000 is available for routine maintenance and repair. Now, we clearly track money in different ways. And so one of my goals for next year for the budget is that the city's buckets and our buckets are the same so that everyone cannot go insane when we're trying to understand these numbers. In aggregate, we're getting closer because we were several million dollars off. We're now at about $1.4 million off, which is still $1.4 million too much. But we will continue to work with the city to try to reconcile these and get that delta down to zero. I will repeat, as I did last time, the chart in that first slide, that's what's in our bank account. So we'll continue to work to reconcile. But any other numbers that you hear, I want to remind folks, this is what's in the account. And for routine maintenance and repair, I don't know how many different ways I can say this. All we have is $850,000 left. Any questions?
Ms. Young.
Another question. Do we have... What have we spent this year, '27, '28? I recognize we still have almost 60 days on maintenance. Do we know that number? And that's not a fair question now because we probably didn't prepare to answer that question. But maybe just later, I'd be curious what that number is, what we spent on what we're going to characterize as routine maintenance, i.e. things that would come out of that 800 expenditures that we would categorize as relevant to that 850 number.
Well, if I do draw your attention back to that first chart, the fourth column over says YTD expended. So it does show what we have spent. Now, I do not have details on any of that, so I'm not prepared to talk through it in detail. But I'm glad to follow up if you have specific questions.
Ms. Gibson.
As it pertains to the discrepancy with the city's data, I would be interested in seeing the breakdown of the, particularly with this school planning and construction dollars. I mean, I think if we could see whatever the starting number was and where those funds came from, and then what the expenditures have been off of that. Because, I mean, while the $16 million number is getting closer, I still have a certain amount of unease that, all in all, it doesn't look like we're even comparing apples to apples here.
Yes, so we are working on the Sunday meeting for this week to sit down and go it line by line to understand, as you said, what was the starting place? And then how did we get to eight? And how did we get to 13? And make sense of it all. So I will gladly bring that back at our next meeting. I also wanted to share the education fund spending. And I think that is actually listed under the strategic plan. So if we can put that one up as well. Great. So as I shared previously, we have embarked on a philanthropic effort to help with my transition into the role, to help with the execution of the 100-day plan, and to help with the execution of the strategic planning process. And so what you have here is a list of expenses listed out by generally which project. Was it transition? Was it the 100-day plan or strategic plan? As you can see, it comes to just shy of $150,000. This is all being paid for from private funds. And the donors are listed on the next page. As you can see, it matches at about $150. And we'll say we're trying to raise $250 for additional expenses that we anticipate along the way. For example, nowhere here have we captured the cost of, say, printing the strategic plan and disseminating it broadly or things of that nature. So there will be additional expenses as there will be, as you can see on the equity audit, we're doing part one now. But there are going to be additional parts as we want to get deeper into other equity pieces. So there will likely be an additional cost there as well. I was mistaken when I was asked earlier about the cost. I thought it was going to be a zero cost for that, but actually, it is a cost, but being paid for out of the private funds.
Where is this... I apologize. You have sent me into the direction of where the document is.
It's in five... It's in the strategic plan agenda item? Sorry. That was my mistake. I apologize.
5.02.
Okay. Yeah.
Ms. Cosby.
So when we spoke before about the whole equity audit, we asked that we receive some type of outline as to the template, how it's going to be done, the template for it, what's going to be audited.
Yes.
So...
I know how that... I'm sorry, neglected to bring this evening, but I'm glad to send it out to everyone tomorrow.
As well as for the budget.
Yep. We have both. And glad to make that publicly available on our website wherever it makes sense.
Oh, ma'am chair.
Ms. Young.
Just real briefly, the risk is stating the obvious. I think it's incumbent on us to convey our gratitude to the donors that we saw listed on there for their very generous investment in rich public schools.
We concur. Because the partnership, I don't think any school district can go without the support of the community, the nonprofit community. So it takes everyone to make this work. And yes, thank you for all of our sponsors.
I don't have anything further on the budget.
Next item.
The next item is item 7, board action items 7.01. Receive for action a resolution recognizing National Teacher Appreciation Week. That resolution was read earlier in the meeting. I just need a motion, please.
So moved.
It's been moved by Ms. Young and seconded by Ms. Burke to receive for action the resolution recognizing National Teacher Appreciation Week. Any discussion? Call the question.
Ms. Dohr?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Mrs. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. The next item is to receive for action a proclamation recognizing School Nurse Day. The proclamation is on Board Docs, but it reads, "Whereas students are the future, and by investing in them today, we are ensuring our world of tomorrow; and whereas families deserve to feel confident that their children will be cared for when they are at school; and whereas all students have a right to have their physical and mental health needs safely met while in the school setting; and whereas students today face more complex and life-threatening health problems requiring care in school; and whereas school nurses have served a critical role in improving public health and in ensuring students' academic success for more than 100 years; and whereas school nurses address the home and community factors, social detriments that impact students' health; and whereas school nurses are professional nurses that advance the well-being, academic success, and lifelong achievements of all students by serving on the front lines and providing a critical safety net for our nation's most fragile children; and whereas school nurses act as a liaison to the school community, families, and healthcare providers on behalf of children's health by promoting wellness and improving health outcomes for our nation's children; and whereas school nurses support the health and educational success of children and youth by providing access to care when children's cognitive development is at its peak; and whereas school nurses are members of school-based teams, social health services, 504 IEP, disaster emergency planning, to address the school population; and whereas school nurses understand the link between health and learning and are in a position to make a positive difference for children every day; therefore, be it resolved that the Richmond Public Schools celebrates and acknowledges the accomplishments of school nurses everywhere in their efforts of meeting the needs of today's students by improving the delivery of healthcare in our schools; and offers gratitude for the nation's school nurses who contribute to our local communities by helping students stay healthy in school and ready to learn; and keeping parents and guardians at work, not just on this National School Nurse Day, but at every opportunity throughout the year. Now, therefore, we Richmond Public Schools hereby proclaim Wednesday, May 9th, 2018, as School Nurse Day in Richmond Public Schools."
Need a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Ms. Owen and seconded by Ms. Burke to receive for action a proclamation recognizing School Nurse Day. Any discussion? Call the question.
Ms. Dohr?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. The next item is 7.03, receive a presentation and a recommendation for action on the facilities collaboration proposal.
Thank you. If you go on Board Docs, you'll see the same document that we deferred action on during our last meeting. So I'll give everyone a second to pull that up or get it in hard copy. And let's see if we can get it up on the screen as well. So this is intended to be the follow-up to the discussion we started a couple of weeks ago around how to proceed with the construction of schools using the $150 million from the meals tax. I want to clarify, that is not the complete breadth of Phase 1. So we're talking about how would we move forward using the $150 million from the meals tax. And so just wanted to start with a couple of things I've heard from board members and from city officials. Just to kind of set the stage first. I think we can all agree that students and families of RPS are best served when RPS and the city collaborate. Two, that RPS and the city have a shared commitment to moving as expeditiously as possible to build new schools with the revenue generated by the meals tax. Three, the city recognizes that the school board has complete authority over its facilities plan. And four, the school board recognizes that the city has complete authority over revenue generation. These are all known facts, but I thought it might be helpful just to restate them as we go down this path. So we talked a lot about having some clear structures to ensure collaboration between RPS and the city as we move forward. And so here, we're proposing a joint construction team, JCT, which would have three members from RPS and three from the city. The goal was to have this group identified by May 15th. Remember, we were a week ago when this was put together, but I think we could work expeditiously to make that happen. The JCT would meet on a weekly basis to deal with any issues that came up in the planning process, the construction process, and even the initial occupancy phase of the process as we've worked through punch lists and other issues that come up. The JCT would work to achieve consensus on any questions that came up. And it would provide a monthly progress report to both the school board and to the city. So this would be the primary working body, the primary collaborative body, to help guide the planning, construction, and initial occupancy phase of all the projects. We'd also have a school stakeholder committee for each of the school communities where construction was going to take place. And that would be the body which would really represent the views and perspectives of the local school community. The proposed composition of the SSC would be two students from the current school and then two feeder pattern students, which obviously only makes sense in the Elkhart-Thompson and George With cases. But it's important that we have kids who are actually going to be living in these schools or learning in these schools be a part of the process as well. Same two current family members and then two feeder pattern family members. The current principal, two current teachers, and two current support staff, along with two school board members and two community stakeholders or partners. And this group, again, would convene to help guide school-specific questions. They would meet on a monthly basis, provide recommendations to the JCT. And the school stakeholder committee would be the group that makes the recommendation on the specific design that is selected. Four phases of the work. Number one is to issue the RFP. I just heard from the city that they are getting very close to being ready to move forward on this. We initially talked about May 1st, but since our discussion got delayed, we're shooting towards May 15th. So assuming we have approval this evening to move forward with this structure, they're prepared to move forward. And it would require us, obviously, to create the JCT as quickly as possible to make sure all concerns were being addressed. Phase two is actually reviewing and selecting the designs or modifying the designs as we discussed previously. The idea here for efficiency and expediency is to start with existing designs and then make modifications as we see fit for each of the school communities. That would be recommended by the SSC, which I would then bring to all of you. Phase three is then securing approval for the start of the construction, obviously, all the permitting and everything that needs to happen. The city would take the lead on this, again, with the guidance from the JCT and the SSC. The goal there would be to have all that completed so by March 15th, 2019, shovels are in the ground. I actually think we could do it quicker than that, but that's sort of the last possible date if we are to achieve our construction timeline, which would be, again, to open up George Mason and Green as brand-new schools by August of 2020. Still a bit of a debate around Elkhart-Thompson and George With. Elkhart, there's sufficient funding for. It's just a question... Elkhart, there's sufficient funding for, it's just a question of the city's ability to borrow debt at certain times, which I will be sitting down with the city to talk more with them about this week. George With, we still have the funding gap. As we recall, the one hundred and fifty million won't get us all the way on George With. I also want to note, harkening back to our earlier budget discussion and our capital funds, there's only about thirteen million left in the planning and construction fund for work to support this. I'll be very transparent. I have promised a new gym at Huguenot. We are going to have a new gym at Huguenot. I will almost certainly need to take money out of that thirteen million to fund the new gym at Huguenot. So that thirteen is going to begin to come down as we also come across AC units that go out, and we know that's going to happen over the next last six weeks of school as heat goes up. So that thirteen million, I think, is going to dwindle somewhat by the time we get into all this work, and so I think at best we can count on one hundred and fifty million from the meals tax, and let's call it seven to ten million from that thirteen million line for architectural and engineering work. All that to say, it means we clearly need additional revenue to complete the George With project. But we're not talking about the facilities plan tonight. We're talking about the structure, and so I will stop there and I'll take any questions.
Ms. Owen? Okay. First of all, on the elementary schools, I don't know that we need two school board members?
I was just trying to be inclusive.
I just, I don't know.
Okay. Some of our schools, and it may not be the case with this one, we have one school board member has the school and another school board member has families that come from their district of the school, so it's a little bit messy, so I was just trying to...
Okay. Also, both Ms. Burke and I had indicated that we would really like to change the names of these schools. Can we get going on that process as well?
I'm glad to work that into the process, and I've certainly noted that. I am merely calling them by their names as they currently exist.
I know.
Yes.
The longer we do that, the harder it gets to be saying it. And I'm not sure that, in the past, I don't know that we've been able to use these funds for air conditioning units.
You mean the funds that were in the architectural and engineering line?
Yes.
That may be the case...
I mean, the construction plans for the gym floor, but I don't know about the air conditioning, so...
Yes, and my only point is if my choice is to have kids not have air conditioning or take funds from that fund, I'm going to take funds.
I know, I just, I don't know, there might be some technical issues.
Is that something that we just go to city council and say, you know, given our...
Sounds like a good idea.
Yes, so, and I will certainly address that in our meeting next week. I do want to keep us focused on the construction process.
So, I have consideration for the board, for the school stakeholder committee, for the two school board members. I would recommend Ms. Owen and Ms. Burke because of those two elementary schools that are to be built in the first phase, Green and George Mason.
I defer to the board on that.
Ms. Gibson?
When we talked about this last, one of the follow-up items was to look and see how the other surrounding counties and other school systems were addressing school construction and management.
Yeah, so it varies. Some have a consolidated city, well, county and school district structure so that it's almost one entity. Some have them bifurcated, and different jurisdictions handle it differently. Almost all that I've seen, though, have some, when there are different entities, have some sort of committee or team that helps manage the process so that all the parties are at the table and helping problem solve. So, yeah, in summary, it kind of runs the gamut from what I've seen.
I'd be interested in seeing the kind of breakdown of who does it which way.
If there are no further questions, I just want to impress upon the board the urgency of taking action on a process so that we can move forward and expeditiously begin the work.
Mr. Young?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know that I have many questions, but I do have a lot of thoughts. So first, I commend the superintendent for putting this together because clearly it provides for, in my opinion, more collaboration than arguably RPS and the city had in the past pertinent to school construction. But my concerns, perhaps, perhaps the origin of my concerns really do regard the taxpayer's spending sixty-five million dollars, something north of that, at Huguenot High School, and because of all the problems that we past tense have had there and all the kind of recurring problems, I have something less than confidence in replicating what was done in a preceding administration. So I commend us for, one, reviewing, considering an approach that departs from that, but my concern or reservation is that it still, it still puts, let me say it differently. My concern is that it's still something less than RPS being the driver's seat. And why I'm most concerned with RPS being the driver's seat is because I perhaps am a radical on the subject, but I really, really, really don't want to build another cookie-cutter school building that looks akin to countless other schools, but instead really would like to think about this brave new world, as it's been coined, that we live in and what that's going to mean for education in the twenty-first century. I'm not sure that we as a board or as an organization have had that conversation yet, which candidly disappoints me, but there are people that have, and there are folks that have done a lot of extraordinary research in this regard and have invested a lot of time there, too. And so my plea for my colleagues would be that we're really, really intentional about what kind of school we want to erect, and so, for example, let me just put some meat on the bones, so not just speaking abstract or generalities. So nine months on the campaign trail, I've spoken a lot about schools within schools. We had a debate, I think we called it that, as it related to consolidation and schools within schools. My point is not to make a case for schools within schools this evening. My point instead is to use it as an example, say, if we were to adopt that approach, or if it was an approach of Ms. Cosby or Ms. Burke, whoever wanted, you would design a school accordingly. I was party to building a unique curriculum at Metta Brook High School, something called Metta Brook Academy for Digital Entrepreneurship, a cohort, a school within a school, however you want to call it. But when we built it, we had to bring in AE people, GC people, and design a space that obviously would have never been built in the way that it did if, when Metta Brook was first constructed or even renovated, somebody would have said, oh, well, do you know, fast forward a few years, Metta Brook would have this school within a school. Again, I'm just using that as an example. You could pick any number of things, right? My concern, or my plea for the group, is that we really reverse engineer, and we really think about what, not unlike what the superintendent did with us a moment ago pertinent to strategic plan, what do we want to achieve as a district? What kind of learning outcomes do we want? And are there, and I believe that there are, so it's rhetorical, I suppose, but are there designed builds that would accommodate the specific things? And if the question is yes or affirmative, then I think it's important that educators have primacy in developing those buildings. I really like what I see on the screen because I think it's a step in the right direction. I just don't think it goes quite far enough for what I would prefer. Sorry for the wrong syllable. Thank you.
I don't know if this is a question or just more of a comment, and I think, I think we can address some of these concerns, but I've been doing a little bit of research and talking to some folks that have been involved in these types of designs and builds across the state. And one issue that I think we've had within RPS is that because we're bifurcated between the city and RPS, we have an owner和user conflict, and I don't want to increase cost to this project, but I do feel passionately that we need the user perspective at the table. I worry about, I understand the sort of, some of the things that Jonathan was saying as it relates to concerns about city doing the construction, RPS doing the construction. I worry on the same realm, if we were to manage the construction, that we don't have the bench to do that. So I think, I don't think there's a good answer, and I think this is probably getting us in the right perspective, right realm, but I do think we might want to consider having some sort of program manager from, that has the user perspective in mind as opposed to the owner perspective in mind. I don't know what that looks like, but that's just my thoughts.
Can I ask some just clarification? When you say to have someone with the user perspective?
Yep.
Yeah, so do you feel that would not be addressed by the joint construction team? But if it's not, help me understand how we could address that.
Yeah.
I mean, I certainly agree. I don't want anything, any major decision or anything being built or whatever without schools' personnel being able to say, mm, that doesn't look right.
Yeah. My understanding, and I could be wrong, I'm not an expert, my understanding is that there will be a program manager hired as part of this process.
Yes.
And it matters whose payroll that person is under.
Gotcha. Well, I mean, like I will say, we are certainly going to need at least one person who focuses on this and manages and prepares for the JCT meetings and does all this work, so from my perspective, the administration does need a point person who is available at all times to handle all the questions, be at every construction site, so I have every interest in making sure that that's the case. But as we all know, at the end of a meeting, you say, all right, who's got the next steps? And I think all this is helping to try to do is try to help divide that up a little bit while creating structures that make it absolutely clear that we are going to be at the table and at every shovel pool and at every, I'm out of my construction analogies, but you got my point.
So Superintendent, so with clarification, so we're using the existing designs with the ability to make modifications?
Correct, and while I applaud Mr. Young's desire to, you know, explore more creative and innovative designs, which I have to state with record is my natural inclination, that will almost certainly mean that we will not open up Green and Mason in the fall of twenty because it's just going to take more time and it's going to be more expensive. Now, I'm trying to follow the will of the board and trying to implement as much as Phase One as I possibly can, as fast as I possibly can, and so I just think we would have to recognize the trade-off if we wanted to do a three-to-six-month exploration of the most innovative school designs in America. We could do that, and we could set up some visits, but I almost guarantee you, they will be more expensive than, exceedingly more expensive than what we're planning to do, and I assure you, we will not be opening Green and Mason in the fall of twenty if we do that.
So what are the savings for using existing designs but making modification?
I've heard various estimates, but I think it's fair to say it's several million.
And so, Ms. Dorr's program, programs, I think, so the input from the school stakeholder committee?
Yes.
Your principals, community input, board members, teachers, support staff, that would involve programmatic input?
Yes, so if the group felt passionately about arts spaces, dance spaces, whatever the case may be, then I think we would need to identify designs that accommodate that, or if not, that they would propose recommendations. And again, I want to be absolutely clear that the selection of the design is something the SSC would do and RPS would have complete authority over. So that is, that is, that's non-negotiable. There's no, that would not be something that we have to come to mutual agreement on with the city.
And so, just to that point, this was the structure for, when the N.A.S.C. was schools would build, but also to caution us, and I know you've heard, you've heard me say this before, some of the, a lot of the challenges with Huguenot in changing the opening date. The opening date was changed from September twenty fifteen to January twenty fifteen. I strongly believe those, that's why we, you know, have some of those challenges. So be intentional in the process, the timeline, so that we won't compromise on meeting, you know, meeting the deadlines and the opening date of the schools. Mr. Young?
Ms. Gibson? Monsieur? Monsieur?
Thank you. So I, as I've said before, I agree with Ms. Dorr's thoughts about needing to have the, you know, that expertise, I think, within the system. As a person who's worked in the design field, I get a little, my goosebumps come up with, like, this, because we're literally talking about design by committee, right? And so that weird things can come out of committee. Now, granted, we do want all the input, but I also think we want to create a system that's streamlined, and I feel very strongly that, you know, while we may not have the bandwidth, that we need it. I mean, not only with the construction of these new schools, but we have a lot of maintenance needs, and we need the expertise and the bandwidth to be able to lead those efforts because ultimately we have buildings and we need the leadership to be able to maintain them. And so, you know, I just think that, you know, building projects are really complex, and, you know, whatever we can do to streamline that, and I find this bifurcation, and I can't even pronounce it correctly, and it just seems to add an additional complexity that may not be necessary, and, you know, and even as it pertains to, you know, understanding the balance at the end of the process, you know, I think if we have the funding, then we know how much is left over at the end of the day, and I wonder if by adjusting the process, we might, you know, eliminate some of the discrepancies in accounting as well.
Monsieur?
Thank you. Just a few thoughts, no particular order, perhaps a couple at the risk of beating a dead horse. One, you know, I really, so this is a subject that I've spent a lot of time thinking about, and perhaps because, I'll just say it, perhaps because I manage my classroom, and it's very, very, very unlike... and it's very, very, very unlike other classrooms. But I really would hate for us to, for example, erect new buildings with just one front, one, one front wall in the classroom, rather than what I believe a classroom really is, which is four fronts of the classroom, where teacher, or excuse me, where students are teaching other students and you have more than one teacher in the classroom. That's, that's one thought. On the topic of Huguenot, I agree with, I agree with Chair, and I think that there are a lot of, there are a lot of mistakes, probably because of the expedited timeline. But then there are other things that I just, you know, Tommy, when he was here, I remember we used to lament how if he had designed that building, he would have, I hope he's okay with me saying this, but he would have never designed it in the way that it was because it's just got so much ingress egress. There are just so many places for, for students to, in other words, exit the building and, of course, last year, fortunately, not, fortunately not this year, but last year, we had just real chronic problems with students doing precisely that and going back to the woods and hanging out on the train tracks all day. And partly, I think, you can, partly, you can attribute that to what I would characterize as arguably a design flaw because the user wasn't perhaps at, didn't have a seat at the table in a way that, than they should have. And then lastly, I'm not sure, I think that this is the conversation to, to introduce this idea, but, but lastly, I really think that, I really think it would be in our interest to identify, I really don't want to provide AE people and general contractors just carte blanche to come in and, of course, they're going to propose what they're going to propose, but I'd love to provide them, and granted, this would have been a good conversation for, in, before the RFP went out, and since it still hasn't gone out, I guess this is a good conversation. But I'd really love for us to provide some direction as it relates to what the cost per capita student is. And I've had a lot of conversations with a lot of, a lot of folks and, you know, for example, Chesterfield County is building a couple of new schools at something like twenty, twenty-eight, twenty-nine thousand dollars per capita student. You talk, you know, you talk to some other people and they're building schools at something significant, something significantly more than that. Anyhow, my point for my colleagues to consider, along with the administration, our PS administration, is what that, if there should be some kind of target, if there should be some dollar number, if we say, "Hey, look, we are looking, we are looking for a, we know we have finite resources, we are looking for some kind of target figure for you to hit some kind of number." And I suppose if we incorporated that within an RFP, then obviously persons are going to come back with what they always do. They're going to come back with the bells and whistles and they're going to come back with something less. So I'd just love to introduce that for my colleagues' consideration, in other words saying, "Hey, at the elementary level, we want a target price of whatever that number is, twenty-nine thousand dollars per capita student for high school, thirty-five, et cetera, et cetera." And then my last thought is, again, at the risk of belaboring the point, Huguenot, I am very, I am very disappointed with all the problems that we have there and what that means, first and foremost, for our students and of course for our teachers and staff, but also for the taxpayers. And I, I really would like for us, I think it's imperative for us that we hold some people accountable, and I'm not going to elaborate on that right now, who I'm referring to, but I think it's important that we hold some people accountable. But I understand because of the past arrangement that that's more difficult for us as RPS absent the city intervention. So that's another one of my concerns or reservations as it relates to what we're, the past approach and what's been proposed this evening. Thank you.
Ms. Cosby?
Thank you. I do have reservations about us. I, I'd like the collaboration and the collaborative approach, because I do, as my colleague Ms. Dor mentioned, I do have reservations about our bandwidth and, and being able to take it all on. But of course, yes, having a point person. But also, I don't see anything wrong, Jonathan, with having these conversations upfront. These are lessons learned. And even when we talk about, I didn't think you were going to get into the price, but I, I thought that you were going to talk about, for me, even upfront, yes, we can still have some type of visioning session even when looking at the current designs, because we know that the current designs weren't necessarily the, there, there are, there is room for modification, there is room for improvement, and just based on lessons learned, you know, but we have this empty space up here that we can't clean as opposed to, or so many entrances or what have you. So I, I would just suggest that, that we come to the table now, as quickly as possible with the city, and say, "Look," and just have these very candid conversations about what we like to see moving forward and some of the true issues that have impeded student learning, quite frankly, so, and their experience within the building. So I think that it's, in the spirit of collaboration, even more so than this, if we can do something like that.
I don't want to delay the start of the school. I don't want to delay it. I don't think we've had the problems at Broad Rock and Oak Grove that you're talking about, Huguenot. It's all been about, we're not talking about George Wiz right now. We're talking about two elementary schools. That's what the RFP is for. Okay? So I don't see why we have to have this great big delay in getting going on this. We want the schools to open in the fall of 2020 while I'm still on this board. So however we're going to do it, let's get going. Thank you.
Ms. Dor?
Oh, I mushed that we approved the thing.
Second. It's been moved by Ms. Dor and seconded by Ms. Burke to approve the collabor, the proposal for the collaboration between RPS and the city for the construction of new facilities. Any discussion? Mr. Young?
I've said just about everything I need to say. I just want to, though I am eager to get our students out of some awful facilities ASAP, and it's imperative that we do that, I also am eager to see that the taxpayers not be taken for another ride, and they have been.
Call a question?
Motion's made by Ms. Dor, seconded by Mrs. Burke, to approve the proposal for collaboration between RPS and the city for the construction of two schools. Ms. Dor?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
No.
Mr. Young?
No.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Mrs. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes five, two. The next item on the agenda is 7.04, received for action, the Human Resources Action.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school board, superintendent cameras. Earlier this evening, I gave you a copy of the Human Resource Agenda as well as the addendum. I present for you the following recommendations for actions. The nomination of nineteen employees, the resignations of fifty-one employees, the returning of leave from six employees, the furlough of fifteen employees, the retirement of ten employees, and the dismissal of one employee. Are there any questions?
Need a motion? Ms. Young?
Madam Chair, an inquiry regarding one personnel matter. We will have a conversation later this evening, enclosed.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
The next item is 7.05, received for action, war traffic, district activity request. I do have several requests this evening. Madam Chair, I have a request from Mrs. Burke. She'd like to contribute one thousand dollars, banquet fee of one hundred dollars, each seat for tickets to the RV, the Richmond, Virginia branch of the NAACP. The contact person is delegate Dolores McQuinn, and this is for eight students and two adults at Franklin Military and Armstrong to attend. She is also requesting five hundred dollars for Shimborazo Elementary School, and this is for field trips to the Science Museum and to the Children's Museum of Virginia, and it's for students that cannot attend due to lack of funding. The field trip is, will be in June of this year, and she is requesting a thousand dollars to go to Franklin Military Academy for a program also in June of this year, and the name of the program is Real Life Applications. And the theme or purpose of the program, it's a field trip for eighth graders with SOL PS6 potential and kinetic energy, SOL PS10 forces and velocity and acceleration, so it will assist with the SOLs. The total that she is requesting is twenty-five hundred dollars. Ms. Cosby is requesting...
Ms. Burke?
No, the total is twenty-five hundred. No, it's one thousand.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Cosby is requesting to give funding to Overby Shepherd, five hundred dollars to provide help with the purchase of much-needed books for students, specifically third grade and fifth grade? Third through fifth grade? Okay. And she is also requesting to donate five hundred dollars to MLK to assist with the community outreach efforts during May. So the total for her request is one thousand dollars.
Need a motion? Suck it? We need a second. Okay, Ms., it's been moved by Ms. Owen and seconded by Ms. Burke to approve the district activity request. Any discussion? Call a question?
Ms. Dor?
Yes.
Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Abstain.
Ms. Cosby?
Yes.
Ms. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Yes.
Motion passes six, one. The next item is new business.
Just to like to thank Ms. Gibson and Ms. Burke for agreeing to be board representatives for the renaming of Jalen Stewart. And just to support the walk-in tomorrow for, to support sustainable funding, which is a much-needed issue. If you look back to '09, you look at the funding for RPS, you look at the number of positions that have been cut over the years, you look at the state funding. From '09, from '08 to '09 to now, we're pretty much at the same level of funding from the city and the state. And as you heard tonight, we have many needs as it relates to maintenance and repairs. We need much support for, to provide the resources and the opportunities for our children. So I just want to stand in solidarity, solidarity with our schools, our teachers, and staff and our students on tomorrow for the walk-in. Ms. Young?
Madam Chair, pursuant to section 2.2 dash 3711, I didn't see any hands out there. Pursuant to section 2.2 dash 3711, subsection A, subsection one of the Code of Virginia 1950 is amended, a move at school board, city Richmond convening closed session to discuss prospective candidates for employment, the assigning, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of employees of the division, including consideration of the human, of the Human Resources Agenda of this date.
All in favor? I'm sorry. Give me a second. We need a second. It's been moved by Mr. Young and seconded by Ms. Gibson. All in favor? Any opposed? Seeing that we have none, we are now enclosed.